For October 21st, please stand is Commissioner Doria. Will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Sheumaker, an affirmative allegiance.
Let us pray. Thank you heavenly Father for this beautiful day and thank you for all our blessings, Lord. We thank you for this meeting that this planning commission to come together, make decisions for our county, maybe to be the right ones. Bless us all, Lord, as we have this meeting and give a safe passage on the way home. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
May the lead do the following. States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to establish a quorum. We have six of eight, so we do have a quorum. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve this presented?
I'll move.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Raise your hand. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to our discussion topic, the comprehensive plan draft, section seven. Tyler, I'll let you come to the podium and take over the meeting.
All right, so today I'll be presenting section seven of the comprehensive plan update, which goes over the goals, objectives, and strategies. This section is important for guiding the future growth, and it's been shaped by the community meetings and all the input we gather from the citizen surveys and then also from these planning commission work sessions. I'll be mostly focusing on the overarching goals and objectives in this section during the presentation, but we can definitely dive into any specific strategies afterwards. And kind of at the beginning or at the core of this section are the vision and mission statements, which outline where the county intends to go and how it plans to achieve those goals. So for the vision statement, this reflects Buckingham County's long-term aspirations, balancing rural charm with responsible growth. And the vision statement that we came up with was Buckingham County will be a thriving and connected community that preserves its rural charm and natural landscapes while fostering responsible development. Families will grow, agriculture will flourish, local businesses will prosper, and new opportunities will be cultivated. We came up with a tagline for this vision, "Growing Together, Preserving Our Roots." And then along with the vision statement, the mission statement outlines the steps the county could take to achieve the vision, focusing on balancing growth and preserve and preservation while enhancing residents' quality of life. The mission statement that we came up with, Buckingham County's mission is to foster responsible growth while preserving our rural charm and natural landscapes. We are committed to supporting local businesses, promoting fiscal responsibility, and attracting new industries that align with our values. Through community engagement and sound planning, we aim to create a thriving, inclusive future where families, businesses, and new opportunities flourish. And the tagline for the mission, "Growing Responsibly, Preserving Our Rural Character, and Cultivating New Opportunities." After the vision and mission, it goes into the goals, objectives, and strategies, which basically takes the vision and mission and translates it into actionable steps. The goals are kind of broad outcomes that the county aims to achieve. The objectives are specific measurable actions designed to guide initiatives, and the strategies are detailed steps the county could take to stay on track toward its long-term vision. And these goals, like the vision and mission, were also informed and shaped by the feedback we got from the community and the community meetings, the citizen survey, and these planning commission work sessions. Going into the first goal, foster continuous and adaptive planning processes. This goal is about ensuring Buckingham County's planning efforts remaining proactive and flexible to meet evolving community needs. To achieve this, Buckingham County could focus on regularly updating plans for land use, transportation, and public facilities that could help maintain alignment with the county's long-term goals, strengthening data collection to ensure decisions are informed by the best available information, engaging the community, and improving interdepartmental collaboration to help ensure planning reflects residents' input and fosters better coordination across departments, and building capacity for future growth by investing in infrastructure, staff, and technology that could help the county adapt as conditions change. Going into goal two, guide development to preserve rural character and promote responsible development. This goal emphasizes the importance of preserving Buckingham's rural charm while promoting responsible growth. The county could consider taking some of the following steps to achieve this, directing development to village centers to help prevent sprawl and protect agricultural lands, protect environmentally sensitive areas through zoning tools and buffer zones to safeguard wetlands, forests, and other critical areas, support local agriculture by investing in agriculture infrastructure and strengthening connections between farmers and local markets, and ensuring that infrastructure improvements align with land preservation efforts to balance growth with maintaining rural character. For goal three, support managed population growth to enhance quality of life. This goal aims to balance population growth with the county's capacity to maintain quality services and infrastructure for all residents. To achieve this, the county could focus on directing growth to growth areas where infrastructure like roads, utilities, and broadband can support it, with regular assessments and upgrades as needed, encouraging development in high-growth areas and village centers to protect rural areas and concentrate growth, providing affordable housing options by encouraging mixed-use developments in areas with sufficient infrastructure, and expanding access to health care and recreation, particularly in underserved areas, to enhance public well-being. For goal four, promote long-term economic opportunities for all residents. This goal focuses on fostering sustainable economic opportunities by supporting local businesses and attracting industries aligned with Buckingham's values. The county could explore some of the following steps, support local businesses through mentorship programs and ensuring access to critical infrastructure such as high-speed internet, attracting new industries by partnering with regional organizations, and enhancing business parks to make them more attractive to potential employers, fostering a skilled workforce by collaborating with educational institutions and workforce development programs to ensure residents can meet emerging job opportunities, expanding access to economic resources for underserved communities through targeted initiatives and partnerships. Goal five, develop an efficient, safe, and accessible transportation network. This goal focuses on creating a safe, efficient transportation system that serves all residents and supports economic growth. For this goal, the focus could be on improving road safety through collaboration with VDOT, securing funding for road maintenance, and identifying priority areas for safety upgrades, expanding multimodal transportation options such as bike lanes and shuttle services to improve connectivity and access to key destinations, streamlining logistics to help local businesses connect to larger markets by optimizing transportation routes and infrastructure, prioritizing safety in school zones and residential areas by implementing traffic calming measures and enhancing pedestrian infrastructure. And then moving into goal six, ensure adequate community facilities and services for all residents. This goal ensures that Buckingham County's community facilities can meet the current and future needs of residents. The county could focus on improving access to health care, social, and recreational services, particularly in the underserved areas, upgrading utility services including water, sewer, and electricity to accommodate a future growth and address aging infrastructure, and developing a long-term public facility plan that adapts to population changes and community needs, and foster public-private partnerships to fund and develop essential community facilities, maximizing resources and benefits for residents. Then we have goal seven, and there are nine in total. Goal seven is preserve and share Buckingham County's historic resources and shared history, which focuses on recognizing and preserving Buckingham's historic landmarks while promoting education and tourism. The county could focus on promoting public education by collaborating with schools and historical societies to raise awareness of local history, preserving historic villages through the establishment of historic district overlays to maintain architectural integrity, fostering public-private partnerships to support restoration efforts and preservation initiatives, promoting rural heritage by partnering with agricultural groups to protect and celebrate Buckingham's rural landscapes. Then we go to goal eight, which is support a diversity of housing options for all income levels. This goal focuses on ensuring Buckingham County provides affordable and diverse housing options while preserving rural character. For this goal, the county could focus on increasing affordable housing by collaborating with nonprofit organizations and private developers, diversify housing types and densities by promoting cluster development and mixed-use zoning in village centers, encourage workforce housing by partnering with local employers to create housing near key employment areas, and then also fostering public-private partnerships to create and maintain affordable housing options across the county. Right, and then the last goal, goal nine, conserve natural resources and promote responsible development. This goal emphasizes protecting Buckingham County's natural resources while encouraging sustainable, responsible development. And for this goal, protecting environmentally sensitive areas by exploring updates to zoning ordinances and promoting conservation easements, preserving agriculture and forested lands by partnering with landowners and state agencies to encourage conservation easements, conserving water resources by assessing water supplies and strengthening protections for groundwater, wetlands, and other areas related to the water resources, and promoting public education on conservation, engaging residents in efforts to protect natural resources, and encouraging sustainable practices. So in summary, the goals and strategies outlined in the plan emphasize Buckingham County's commitment to balancing responsible growth with the preservation of its natural, historical, and agricultural resources. These objectives and strategies reflect the community's values and provide a clear roadmap for the county's future development while protecting its unique identity. That's just a brief overview of the different goals and objectives in this section, and then there are specific strategies with each of those that go a little bit further into detail.
Any comments from any of the Commissioners at this time? Go ahead, Pete.
A couple of things. Number one, in fact, probably only one big question. This didn't come with red line, obviously, because it's completely new. So let me ask you where you came up with this. I mean, there is a goal section in the old comp plan. Does this overlay that, replace it? What happened here? How did you come about to do this?
Yeah, so that was used as part of the process of creating this section, along with researching other counties and localities, goals, objectives, and strategy sections, including Denwady, Cumberland, Charlotte County, and some other plans that we looked at. So the idea was to use these resources as ideas for how to improve the section in its totality, so.
So to continue the conversation, it looks to me like this is a summary of everything we did in the plan. In other words, when we went through the plan, we went through various sections of the plan that dealt with these things. In those sections, again, I don't have it in front of me, but it seems to me that we made recommendations, right? Did you go back and research this to see if they were either complimentary or contradictory? And if you did, can you tell us? It seems to me that you'd be on the hook to tell us whether or not we're contradicting ourselves, because if we are, we're going to look awfully foolish.
Yeah, so the previous sections in the current update of the comprehensive plan were also included in the development of this section, so it shouldn't be contradictory. If there are any specific goals or objectives or strategies.
I don't have the old plan, the revised plan that we've been working on in front of me, but my question is, it seems to me that's your job. So I'm asking you, did you go through each one of those sections to make sure this stuff was not contradictory?
They were used as references in the development of this section. If any specific goal, objective, or strategy is contradictory, it would have been a missed point, but they should, it should be included in the development of this, so it shouldn't be contradictory at all.
Okay.
So you reference other counties. Do you always start with the planning commission when you develop these, or have you had discussions with the county administration staff itself before writing these?
So in developing these, I basically use the information that's available in other comprehensive plans and in the previous comprehensive plan for this county that we're updating.
So I ask, Mr. Chairman, so some of these seem like overstepping for a planning commission. We're talking a lot about inter-county communication, you know, in departments. That really doesn't seem like something we would have the purview to give direction on a lot of these strategies, including budgets. You know, you talk about evaluating infrastructure improvements and investments, and that doesn't seem like something that would be in our purview. I just wondered if you had had a conversation with Ms. Edmiston or Carl Carter or any of the board before writing these, because it doesn't seem like that would be in our wheelhouse to suggest if that is a goal for us or not, to put in a, you know, a master comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so those types of suggestions were in the previous comprehensive plan as well, so it kind of falls in line in the same structure as the previous plan. And a lot of the strategies are overlapping with the strategies and recommendations that were in the previous plan as well.
Yeah, I'm not saying they don't sound good. I just don't know that, you know, it would be, I would be comfortable being like, yeah, this is exactly what we need to do with our budget and with our staff, because again, we're just an advisory committee.
Right. And yeah, so in terms of, you know, doing exactly what's in here, I don't think it's worded to necessarily tell the county exactly what to do, but the idea is that if this is the vision and this is the mission of the county, then these goals, objectives, and strategies will help the county achieve this vision and mission. And it might seem optimistic, but they're just, you know, goals, objectives, and strategies, not necessarily directives that the county must follow.
Other comments from the Commission?
It's definitely a lot of information in this one, so we can, you know, bring this back as a presentation for the next meeting and maybe bring up more specific points after you've had more time to look through it in detail, and if you find anything that you think is specifically needs to be changed or looked at in a different way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't mind having, having it. I don't, I don't have a, the way it's written, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, obviously, everything that we're doing here is a recommendation for the board to approve, so even though there may be budget issues or what, you know, that's fine. I don't, I don't have a problem recommending anything to the board. It's their decision, all right? And then ultimately, it goes back to the public for their, for their approval. So really, you know, the context, I don't have a real problem with. What I have a problem with is this looks to me like the plan, okay? So we went through an extensive effort putting a plan together, you know, looking at geography, looking at routes, you know, we went through and we talked about growth areas along certain corridors. What I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is possible, but what I'd like to do, if you feel these goals and objectives fit with the character in the, in the sections that we've already gone through and refined, how about referring back to them with regard to these goals and these strategies? I mean, I would like to see something that says, okay, goal one, you know, reference this particular thing in the plan, strategy A, strategy A1, reference this particular section. I mean, I'd like to know that somebody who's putting this together, namely you, has gone back and made sure that this thing ties in with the, with all the work we've done, because if, if it's over and above the work we've done, then I've got to go back to what our vice chair said, I don't understand how it got in there, okay? And not that it's wrong, or not that it's bad, it just seems to me that we put the work in, and if you're summarizing that work, I'd like to know where you're summarizing it from. Is that a fair question?
I don't see what you're asking. Tyler won't respond.
Sure, yeah. So I could try to see for the specific goals and objectives or strategies if they are, you know, referencing certain sections that we've already written to make sure that those references are included in the wording here. And it is interesting, actually, that this is one of the later sections in this comprehensive plan, because actually, this one is usually at the very beginning.
Seems to me that would be the org, that makes sense to me.
Because usually, it's the vision and the mission that the rest of the plan is aligning with.
Is this vision statement, is this the vision statement that we had for our county?
No, it's different. It is, it didn't consider that one, but the one that was before was actually kind of like a combination of a vision and mission statement, and it was, you know, seemed like it could be improved quite a bit. So that was considered in the development of this one, including the input that we gather from the community and the input we gather from you all during these meetings as well. So it's not the same vision as is existing in the previous comprehensive plan, but incorporates that in the development of this one.
So let me ask Ms. Edmiston, with regard to the mission statement or the vision statement, do, I mean, you're familiar with the one that we had in our old comp plan. What are your views on this particular vision statement?
Typically, an organization or an entity will develop a vision statement, and that tends to stay static. That's something that the board of supervisors would support with their daily actions, and I would imagine that changing a vision and a mission statement would be something that the county administrator will work closely with the board of supervisors to do.
Yeah, and that hasn't been done in this case.
I believe what Tyler has probably done is taking a fresh approach with a summation of what's been in the comprehensive plan, but this vision statement isn't one that's been adopted. I don't know what the formal adoption process was by county administration and ultimately the board of supervisors for the vision statement. Chairman Bigford, you might be able to help out a little bit more with that. You've served so diligently in the past with the comprehensive plan revisions.
Yeah, I mean, it was input from the, from the staff, especially that to Rebecca Carter, of course, but you got to keep it in perspective that this too is just a draft, and it's, it's goal set. Understandable that some of them are probably pretty lofty, but it's not, in the case of the staff, when you ask that, it's not locking them into participation. It's really just, it's like a suggestion.
It's a recommendation.
Right, right. I mean, he asks recommendations, and it sort of gives them an outline how to get there, but it's not like saying, this is what you have to do, because that's left to the individuals, the staff of the county plus the planning commission board supervisor. This is just a draft. Tyler said, and he's right, there's a lot of material there. Probably the best thing to do is look at it and see if you think something needs to be changed. I do like your idea of referring back to your different sections that we've done. You know, one thing that may happen, it's a mission statement. Tyler, would this make sense to move this to the front of the comprehensive plan? And then follow up with the individual sections referring, you know, making that reference? That's just a thought.
That's what I've seen in other comprehensive plans, as I've been trying to learn about the process that other localities go through. The vision and the mission are usually up at the front, and then you can kind of see how the rest of the plan is aligning with those as you go along. So I think it would make sense.
Yeah, I think it might read better, and then it might make it simpler, too, to make whatever section refers to, like, you know, section one, two, three, four, that we've already done. And you just, as Pete had asked, which makes very good sense, just to make a reference there in when you're, in this outline, because basically, what this is an outline of what the comprehensive plan is trying to do for the county, but then the individual sections, you could make reference to them, so.
Right.
So maybe it would make sense to do that.
Okay.
Do you want to set time for this next month, or do, would you want to move, would you have time to do some corrections and changes? And as Pete would ask, right, if you can make a red line, where we knew where we were at, and now where, you know, what we discussed, what your changes are based on our discussion.
Right, yeah, and that's, I believe that's what's on the schedule for next month as well, is to go over the changes that we would make to this document based on the feedback we gather now. So we would still be sticking to schedule if next month we just go over this document again, and if, after more time, you all have more suggestions, we can work on those then, but we would make the changes based off this feedback now and then get another opportunity to provide feedback from you all next month.
Okay, that sounds good. Would you have time? I know this is presented now. Has Mr. Carter had a chance to look at your mission statement?
No, so I did reach out earlier, about a month ago, asking to see if I could get some, you know, advice and help and input from other people on this, because it did feel a little bit odd to be creating this without much collaborative input. But unfortunately, I had, I didn't get any feedback yet, but maybe potentially that could be coming.
Well, he's got a copy, I would assume. Is that right, Nikki?
I believe he was copied on this email.
Oh, I mean.
There was a, there was an update from Tyler.
He's got a copy, called us to look at it.
I would imagine he does, yes, sir. We can make sure I can get that to him if he does.
Yeah, I'd like to have, see what, if he has any input to it for next month's work session.
Absolutely.
He might have some changes, he might have some recommendations to do with that work.
I'm sure he will, especially after he speaks with the board, too. And then just a note, next work session would be November 18th, and after next week's meeting, that may be a full-day work session and regular meeting.
Right, that's something I was going to discuss, and, because we know we had briefly discussed combining our December meeting, our regular scheduled meeting, to a work session, but at this time, we don't know exactly how many, what's going to be on the docket as far as length. I assume by next, by November, you might have a better idea how long that meeting might be, the regular meeting?
Or the November meeting?
Or the December meeting. Remember, we was discussing moving the.
We discussed the November meeting, too, because of Thanksgiving.
Did we really? Okay. Oh, I remember December. It's fine with me, because it's close.
Are you going to have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to have a significant number of items for the regular meeting?
For the November meeting, next week, we may potentially have a public hearing for November. If I don't receive any further applications, the application date for November is Friday, November 1st. I've had the potential to receive one application due to some conversations with the potential applicant, but other than that, I would only possibly a public hearing in December.
Well, why don't we do this?
Probably combine the November meeting, he could do this there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the November meeting like we talked about with the schedule. And what, it probably makes sense, and I don't know if he can do that, Nikki, give me an answer on this. If we have a small docket for a regular meeting in November, could he go prior, or would it be better for, would it be better for the applicants to do the regular scheduled meeting and then the work session following?
Out of courtesy to the applicant, I would probably say let the applicant and the regular meeting happen first, but.
All right. Why don't we do this, let's keep November as it is, we'll do the December as it is, but we'll have, you'll have a better idea what the docket's going to look like in November for December, and we can, we'll adjust if we need to. And could you let Tyler know if, if we pick up some extra, if we're going to, you know, rather than being here at six, if he's, it probably makes more sense to be here 6:30 or quarter to seven.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
One other question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Is there any, any place where we can get what has been done in the comprehensive plan to date all at once in one packet? Where would we be able to find that?
I could email each of you all of the draft sections that have been revised at your meeting that Tyler has forwarded.
Because if you're going to go back and refer, if you're going to do a reference on this, I'd like to have the draft as it's written now, so that we can go back and, or diligence, if you would.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I could also, Nikki, if you need any help, I got this section saved, too. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any, any other comments from the planning commissioners? I think we are fine then, Tyler. We'll see you November.
All righty. And is it going to be November 18th, or is it a different date for the regular meeting?
That would be the 18th.
18th, okay.
18th, at the regular scheduled time for right now. If it, if something changes, Nikki will let you know, you know, if it makes more sense to be here 6:30.
Yeah.
So be it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, anybody bring us commission matters and concerns? We've discussed altering our schedule on the meetings and combining. Any other Commissioners have anything they want to add? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
If you have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That is unanimous for the record, Nikki. Thank you. I go.